All right, I'm going to call this Mashpee Public Schools Business Meeting on September 21st, 2022 to order. The first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. "Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. Mashpee Public Schools recognizes and honors the many generations of Wampanoak people who have lived and been sustained in this territory for more than 10,000 years. Next, I would like to ratify the agenda for tonight. Are there any changes or any things that members want to attend to? That's not on here. If not, I'll take a motion to ratify.
Do we ratify the agenda and publish?
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion by Don, seconded by Matt. Any discussion? All right, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do we have any public comment? I didn't see any over there, so I think we're good there. Next, I will take a motion to approve the minutes. Page one of your packet, there are two sets of minutes from our two August meetings, regular school committee business meeting, and I guess the second one must be the retreat.
No, I'm sorry. The second was the ratification.
Oh, the ratification.
Maybe Gary did the retreat last time.
We did do the retreat last time.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the August 17th, I'm sorry, the, yeah, August 17th meeting and the August 29th meeting as presented.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Matt. So a motion by Kathy, seconded by Matt. Any discussion? Okay, Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Oh, yes, as well. Your votes are approved. Okay, next, all the way.
All right, I'm still going to start with the binder.
It's all right.
Let's apologize for binder.
You're a freshman now.
Yep.
All right.
All righty, so, good evening, everyone. It's so good to see everyone again. While the summer was amazing, I was so excited to start school again, and I've been loving high school, let me just say. It's definitely a little different from middle school, but at least I don't have to worry about getting lost. So, as it is the beginning of the year, the new seventh graders are still getting used to, like, being in the middle school, high school, because they've never been there before. Of course, they've been given tours, but it's a little different when you're on the spot trying to find your classes. The ninth graders are getting used to being in the high school wing, but not used to, like, everything in the school, because we've been here since seventh grade, well, some of us. Some new students in ninth grade just joined, and they're still getting used to it, but most of the ninth graders are pretty good around the building and where their classes are. So many members for Honor Society, both ninth and eighth graders, volunteered for the Jump Start, which was a few days before school started. Volunteers volunteered to give tours to the seventh and new students, and it was really nice, because we got to see what the seventh grade group would look like and meet everyone and give them a good impression of, like, what it would be like to be at school and what our Mashpee community is like at the Mashpee Middle High School. Everyone was really nice, and it was nice getting to know everyone. A lot of people recognized some seventh graders, which was nice, because, like, you could see them catching up and getting to know each other, and, like, parents recognized some of the volunteers, and, like, it was a nice little reunion, I guess. We had our first all-sports night since before COVID on the sixth. It was from 6:30 to around 7:20, where the students who played any sport, spring, fall, winter, went to this with their guardian or a family member, and basically, Traveri, our athletic director, he talked about everything that was going on in the sports, and he talked about, like, the opportunities for maybe people that wanted to join sports or just joined and were still confused about the rules and how, like, the rules to practices and games, and, like, if you missed a game, if you missed practice. And it was very informational. I mean, some parents have older kids and have gone through it many times, but others are very new, and so it's really good to be able to learn all of that information. Mr. Traveri did an amazing job explaining everything, and he put a really good positive note into everything, even though sometimes, like, when you found out, like, if you missed school or you weren't at school by a certain time and you couldn't go to the game. But rules are rules, and a lot of the students were excited, because after they could meet up, like, with all of their friends after the sports meeting, and some students went straight from their practices and games, like, to the meeting. So it was, like, a very time-appropriate, because it was perfect transition from sports to the sports meeting. This year, the schedule looks a bit different for a lot of students because of COVID. So before, they did the block schedule, and now they're doing the seven classes, seven-day rotation, or six classes, seven-day rotation, drop a class each day. And so for the kids from, like, tenth grade to senior, they're a little used to it, because they experienced it before COVID. But for the seventh, eighth, and ninth graders, they've never had this schedule before at the Mashpee Middle High School, so it's new to them. But from everything that I've heard, everyone is loving the new schedule, because, like, they get their favorite classes every single or almost every single day, and the classes are shorter, so the days feel quicker going by. And the homework load is a bit less, honestly, because the classes are shorter, so everyone's really happy about the scheduling. After, so after-school club signups have come out a few days ago, and so it's basically a Google form, where everyone, like, can fill out what's after-school curriculum they'd be interested in, and it was sent out to everyone, except the middle schoolers and the high schoolers. And, I mean, some are, like, age-limited, so, like, some are for only eleventh and twelfth, but some are open for everyone, and I thought it was really cool, because they didn't do this last year or the year before, and I didn't, and some students were familiar with it, so they, I assume that they did it before COVID, but this was their first time doing it since. And I thought it was a really cool way to have signups for after-school clubs without having to worry about having a certain time or place to meet up or anything like that, and so everyone had the opportunity. Everyone today was talking around, like, about what clubs they joined, and they were, like, "Did you join Chess Club?" And, like, "Oh, I joined Human Rights Club." So it was really nice to hear everyone talking about everything that they were so interested in. And again, since the schedule change, after-school clubs are meeting after school and sometimes before school starts now, rather than during homeroom, because homeroom is only, like, 10, 12 minutes now. Picture Day was last Wednesday, and it was really nice to see everyone dressed up and ready for their first photos of the year. It was really nice, because I came to school and all my friends were dressed up, and they were, like, always all talking about, like, what class they were going to have to take the photos with, and instead of people being excited to miss, like, their class and go to the photos, they were, like, "Oh, I don't want it during this class." And it was, it kind of was a proud moment, because I was, like, "Yeah, Mashpee, we got this. We're happy, we're sad about missing classes, and, like, we're excited to go to our classes." And eighth and ninth graders also volunteered for the Back to School Barbecue thrown for KCC and Quashnet on September 16th, and I wasn't able to attend, but from what I saw, it was a really exciting event, like, they did face painting, and it was really cool. It looked, like, it made me wish that I was in KCC or Quashnet, so I'm really looking forward to what this year has to offer and what the school year will bring. Thank you guys so much, and I hope you all have a great night.
Thanks. Any questions for student rep? We appreciate you making the effort to be here.
Yeah, no questions. Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Good luck with your field hockey season.
Thank you. Yeah, I can stay for a little bit, but I have to go at 6:30.
You can go whenever you need to go.
Yeah, whenever you leave. Okay, so, next, I think we have Roxanne here from the Tribal Education Department. Thanks for the handout.
Winnie Wampanoak. Good evening. I'm Roxanne Mills Brown, the Education Director for the Mashpee-Wampanoak Tribe, and I had to catch up with myself to be sure I got here on time. There's just so much going on, and for that, we thank Mashpee School District for the work that we have before us. It just, since this formal partnership has started and since I've been here, I'm entering my fourth year, I think about a month ago, it's astounding what has taken place. And I think when you talk about building our capacity as a tribal education department, I think we would have, we would have a five-story building at this point with plenty of rooms on each floor. The breadth, the depth, we're still learning, we're still in development, but every single day, whether it's the requests we get from our communities, the work we're doing now with Falmouth, Soon to Be Born, is just, it's phenomenal, and I just want to say again thank you for helping us to be able to accomplish this and get to this point in the work that we do for the people and the community at large. I did provide a handout, and time got away from me. There's some things I did leave out of the handout, but I would just like to review a little bit. On the August 16th, we were privileged to be able to greet new employees at the school district's orientation, and it was kind of a phenomenal date even for us, as we had speakers present on our tribal court, what sovereignty really is, the programs that we offer and can provide to support the community. I think one of the things we missed, and we'll catch up with that, is what does land and trust mean? Because really, that's an important topic, and I think at the time, when we were running out of time, we may have set that piece aside, but we were remiss in doing that, because that affects not only our tribal people, but it affects the community externally as well. That was our privilege. We got to meet with Consuelo a couple of weeks ago. I tried to find the exact date, but I couldn't read my own writing in my agenda, and she did comment on how intriguing it was to understand that we have a tribal court that functions parallel to the state's district court. And I think that's an important thing, because we do provide community services, but we are a tribe, part of a tribal nation, and it's so much different than, like, a human resource organization. And I think the more that we can provide workshops and educational information, the better understanding that everybody has. So that was some good feedback we got, and we had a good discussion with Consuelo on things that we are able to partner with, and she even opened our eyes up to some of the things we could be doing already with data and so forth, so that was very productive. On the 29th, we, a few members of our team presented at the convocation, so we got the opportunity to meet with all the employees. And again, that was such an honor, to be able to just share who we are, our brief perspective on starting a new school year, coming from our eyes, I think, as three people that had attended public school systems, one here in Mashpee, one here there in Falmouth, and then one in Wisconsin, as he was growing, which was Cameron. There are many things that we're doing. We're so excited, because I think we have, I want to say, nine students enrolled with the dual enrollment, and Talia right now is working with Julianne to just kind of decipher and ascertain a mechanism by which we can communicate with the high schools as the kids are taking classes or signing up at Cape Cod Community College, so that we can help provide the financial support as well as support for books. And we would also like to be able to follow these kids and understand how those courses went, how they did, and so forth, as they work through their high school career and go on to college or careers. So that's a good thing. I think what that exemplifies is that we're more and more able to walk side by side with employees in the school as they're doing their different functions, so that we better understand what goes on in their real life here at school, and we're able to help support and supplement, rather than try to invent something or create something when we don't understand what's going on in the formal system. Just as a few things that are in this handout, we had an all-day workshop on the 23rd of August. It was entitled "Learning and Unlearning for School Equity: Native Students, Trauma, and Resilience." We partnered with the Upstander Project and Kisa Tanamuk, who is a longtime tribal advocate and instructor at the University of Maine-Orinoco. We collaborated with Collaborative for Education Services, who actually established the registration process, publicized the event to the different districts, and set up an evaluation mechanism for us. We got some good feedback on that as well. We have a new seventh-grade course. I'm not sure if we have a title for the course, but it's part of the seventh-grade exploratory classes. I think it's entering its third week or so. We have Renee Lopes-Pocknett instructing. She's loving it. We're developing this, we're a little bit ahead of where she's at, but we're developing this kind of as we go, and we hope that this is the first step in a larger scope and sequence of native curriculum. We met yesterday with the Falmouth School Superintendent and her administrative team, and she's interested in possibly sitting in on a partnership meeting at some point. And what we did is we reviewed the partnership agreement to be sure that we were attending to the components there. I don't want to take up too much more time, but one of the things, because also this is televised and we have school faculty here, is that we're offering 13 scholarships to our 2022 high school graduates, only in the amount of $750 each. And right now, we've only been able to disseminate four. So if anybody knows recent grads that are still looking for funding for college, it's not a great amount, but it's what we can offer now, and we're looking for takers. I think the last thing that I'll share is that there'll be, now it's seven native students will be attending the American Indian Science and Engineering Society Conference in Palm Springs, California, the week of October 6th through 8th, and it's for ages 15 to 20. We have students from Mashpee, and I think we may have a student from Bourne. Well, I know we have a student from Bourne, but I think those were the only two schools. We had, like, a record number of 12 applicants, so we had to develop a rubric to make the selections. And I do want to, I think, in front of everybody, thank Talia for her perseverance, because she understands, she's closer to being a student in high school, and she understands the need to really get in there and kind of mix elbows or rub elbows with the students, and it's really shown in, I think, the response we've gotten. We have lots of information now on your website or a link to our website, the meeting workshop, Casey's conference, and we'll be having a close-up, sending students to the close-up conference here, I think it's in early winter. So we continue on. Again, thank you so much for partnering and being so instrumental in our growth and development, and so I say, "Katabatanamu and Kishkananamu."
Do you want to share at all about the Orange Shirt Day on the 30th of September?
Yes, thank you, Patty. On September 30th, the tribe is sponsoring and co-sponsoring, because I know Mashpee's also contributing, not only financially, but with gathering students, finding us a place, and allowing us to educate children on what Orange Shirt Day is. And it really is a recognition and an acknowledgement of not forgetting those children who in the boarding schools were so terribly treated and many lost their lives. And I believe the orange shirt represents a shirt that one of the grandmothers now, she's an elder, received an orange shirt from her grandmother and wore it proudly to school, and this happened to be in Canada. And as she was in school, the nuns within the missionary school took the shirt away from her, and she was no longer allowed to wear it. And when she was of age as an adult and coming back to the whole boarding school trauma reconciliation piece, she brought this orange shirt concept back to the youth and to the people. And so that orange shirt represents what was taken away and what now is being kind of reclaimed as identity, life, and culture. And so we'll all be wearing the orange shirts, many with designs. We've ordered, Joanne probably has ordered orange, just orange T-shirts for the youth. And at 5:30, I believe it is, on the evening of the 30th, there'll be representatives from the tribe and others in support of that around the rotary, some holding signs, some, you know, just there to represent. But thank you, Patty. It's kind of an important piece, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne, before you go anywhere, I thank you for this. This is excellent, and I am aware that the Division VII Chair is looking to have a presence from the tribe at the annual conference again in Hyannis for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. I asked her to reach out to you for that, and they were even talking about perhaps, like, a welcome drum or something a little more, since we were planning it a little further in advance, that that might be able to happen. And that's always the first weekend in November. I don't know the exact dates.
Oh, it's on here. It's the 2nd through the 5th.
Yeah, so it starts, I think, Wednesday and goes to Saturday. So I don't know when the request is for. I'm not as directly involved, but I just wanted to mention it to you.
Okay, and on that note, with the encouragement from the community and other educators out there, we are planning monthly Zoom workshops whereby we can get this out to the large public at large, to our own people and to educators in many of the districts in the state. It's in the packet here. We have some topics, Cranberry Day, which will come from Aquina, Columbus towards the end of October, because of Indigenous Peoples' Day versus Columbus Day, cultural appropriation, and even a workshop on William Abis, who was a Ni'ut minister and reverend that preached in our meeting house here, who was instrumental in helping us to fight the overseers, et cetera. So we listened, and each month we'll have a different topic, but it will be open to the public, and we'll have a formal registration and so forth.
Great. Thank you. That's wonderful. Thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you. Okay, I think I'm up.
Okay, anything else for Roxanne before we move on? Welcome Coach Lopes. So I think next we have Officer Hennessy and Cogswell we get to meet.
Yes, so I want to start by expressing gratitude to Chief Carline and the Mashpee Police Department for the shared focus on the safety of our students and staff. It was, in previous years, we have had one school resource officer, I think, Katie, is this your third year or? Yeah, third year, which has been phenomenal, but to be able to have an additional school resource officer this year, really, I didn't even really have to ask, we've always had it on our hope list, but the chief approached me, and so the support from the town and the value that they place in their work, because we talk about how important it is for school resource officers to really interact and build relationships with students, that comes back later, in later years, in a positive way when they interact with families, and they just need to know that there are resources available to support students as they're navigating schooling and other challenges that they have. So we are lucky this year, we have Officer Katie Hennessy and Officer Peter Cogswell working with us. The schedule that we've set up basically is Katie's doing Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the high school, and then she does Tuesday, Thursday down here, and then Peter is opposite to that, and then they'll flip it at the end of February in terms of that, and then I think there's some overlap time as well. But it's important for me that they're doing a whole K to 12 relationship building, because you never know, sometimes one or the other fits better for a crisis situation, and then also just building that relationship, which is important to us. So if you have any questions for them, but I just want to express again that these are top-notch people that we're so grateful that we have working with us every day. And Peter is a Mashpee graduate.
Yeah, a little scoping out before the meeting and learn that. That's really exciting.
It is nice.
So I guess my first question was just if you could maybe share with the committee and perhaps families that might watch this, sort of what a day in the life of a school resource officer is like at our schools? And if you could just, the mic is not for us, it's for the TV.
It's for the TV, okay. This is my third year. I started during COVID, so I had a very unique experience my first year with the mixed schedules and only half the school, and then learning everybody's faces when we were able to come back to school without masks. And so the last two years, it's been significantly different. This year, I noticed a huge shift in just, everybody seems to have a lighter mood, and it seems to be so excited, as Delia had said, about being at school with the new schedules. But our day-to-day needs and wants of the students can change very drastically and frequently. Some days are easier than others, some are a little bit more heavy, but our main goal is to interact with both the students and the staffs from all three schools. Today alone, I visited each school, being present during arrivals and dismissals, the security of the schools, doing perimeter searches and walking around, just making sure doors are shut. Sometimes they don't close all the way, so that's involved in our days. Sometimes we teach classes, pre-K class, we do community helpers. We come in and show them all of our equipment and our cruisers. We have a social media safety class that we teach for the fifth and sixth graders, and an impaired driving and alcohol and substance use for ninth and 10th graders. As we've been developing the program a little bit more, we're kind of adding more things to it, and students come to us and ask for different things, and I've noticed Officer Cogswell's been in training this week, and when I visit the other schools, they always ask, "Where's Officer Pete?" So they know when we're not there, and same thing that they do for him, too, is, "Where's Officer Katie?" And just having a male and female role there, too, is a whole nother dynamic that's been kind of interesting and fun to take on for this year. So it's just building that, those relationships with those kids. So it's just building that, really, those relationships with those kids and the staff and making them feel safe and comfortable and being comfortable with our uniform and knowing that if they see us out on the road, that we're approachable and, and we're humans underneath us. So that's the important, the biggest piece there is to build those relationships with those students.
Great, thank you. Anything to add?
No, like Katie just said, I've been in training all week. She's been great, so I've just been able to kind of hit the ground running. But I still got a long ways to go, a lot to learn. But it's been great so far, teachers, the whole staff and the kids too, obviously. So it's been great so far.
How long have you been with Mashpee Police Department?
About just four years now.
And you were, you can maybe share what you did before that.
Upon graduation of Mashpee High, class of 2010, I enlisted in the United States Army. Did time in Fort Campbell, Kentucky, Fort Campbell, Kentucky mostly. I deployed to Liberia, Africa in 2014. And then I finished up my last year in South Korea when I was a military police officer, a voyage.
Thank you. You cannot get close enough, Tom, just to not see it. Because I had to listen to the August meeting and it was very hard to hear you. Thank you.
So I just wanted to ask, since you have that unique perspective of having been in the school system and now coming back, what do you see as the biggest change?
I just think.
Over 20, about 12 years.
12 years, obviously the technology, but I mean, I don't know, I think kids are still the same. And obviously it's a little different, but I still see myself in some of the kids, especially at the high school. Because I mean, it wasn't that long ago I was their age. So I don't think much has really changed, other than, you know, maybe some lingo, but other than that. It hasn't been too bad.
Sus, that's the new word.
Yeah, I know that.
Don't worry about it.
Don't worry about it, broski.
Oh, broski, yeah, brah.
Yeah, if you're, if you're a parent and you haven't been called brah yet, have not lived.
Yeah.
So you said that social media workshop or class you do for fifth and sixth grade, do you have things that you're planning for like the high school level as well? Or do you kind of focus it early on?
So we started, I built it with Lindsay Cat and Suzie Brooks last year. We kind of collaborated to put the program together. And we started with the fifth and sixth graders to get that early on. But I was approached last week about doing it for the seventh and eighth graders this year, or eighth and ninth graders. So that is definitely going to happen and probably sooner than, than later. So we've already started, I talked to Suzie yesterday and was like, hey, they, they talked to me about this, so we're going to put that together.
I'd love to see the, see it, just because I know it's something that, you know, these kids deal with in social media is.
We set up a website for the parents too, which I'd be happy to send you the link to.
Please, yeah.
Suzie was a huge part of that. She's, that is definitely her wheelhouse with setting up all the IT stuff. So we put all of our resources together and she set up a beautiful website, so we can share that too.
Please, yeah, I'd love to see it. I think it's great that you guys are providing that from your perspective as officers, but also so the kids understand, you know, it's not just.
It's probably the biggest struggle I've seen in the past three years, and especially with COVID. It's definitely just getting that information out there and knowing how important to be safe. And the way that we, we described it for fifth graders was a little bit different for sixth graders and then for the seventh and eighth graders too. So that's definitely been the biggest struggle and it seems to be escalating each year.
Great, thank you.
Matt?
Not really, just, you know, thank you for everything you guys do, every time I've ever come out of school. It's like, you know, I always see you guys and it's always seems like a positive response with like you and interactions with like all the teachers and the students and everything like that. So it's just, you know, there is that presence of like just having you there that's, you know, like, everyone's safe, you know, so thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I would only add or really echo what the superintendent started with, which is how grateful we are to police, to Chief Carline for the support, as well as to the taxpayers of Mashpee and the town. I think having an actual, an extra SRO is, I mean, perhaps more important now than it ever has been. And I, and I appreciate your observations of sort of the post-COVID era that we're in and sort of everybody kind of adjusting to being, you know, back with the norms of school life. So thank you guys both. And if you need anything from us, please let us know.
I just wanted to add two things too. When Katie talked about the social media work that you did with fifth and sixth grade, there was a decision to deliver the messaging on a per-class basis, not in an assembly, because that does invite a little bit more intimate setting for conversations and kids don't feel as much like, what are the other kids thinking about me? The other thing I wanted to give a shout out to Katie, because on the 29th, when we did a whole afternoon of safety training for our staff, it was something, it was under her leadership and her organization that she put all of that together. And she had collaborators with her, but she really sort of owned that training for us and it was excellent, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Patty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have our Food Services Director and Assistant Director.
Yes, so I'm happy to introduce Kevin. And I might not say this right, but Delar Supretti?
Very close.
And Olivia Bangston. And Kevin is our new Food Services Director and Olivia is our Assistant Food Services Director. And we didn't have an Assistant Food Services Director in the past, but we did have a position of an Administrative Assistant to the Food Services Director, which had been unfilled for a little bit of time. So we really like sort of, we were very fortunate to find both of these individuals to come in and take over. And sort of they're rebuilding and rebranding the Food Services Department, which is getting a lot of positive feedback. They both, they can maybe personally share their backgrounds that sort of make them a very good fit for this. But we are very grateful to have both of them. So do you want to share a little bit about your background, either one of you?
So I am a recent graduate of the University of Rhode Island's Nutrition and Dietetics Program. And then I completed a dietetic internship where I worked in the public schools with their food service department. So my background is definitely nutrition. That's a little bit how I got into food service, pretty much it. This is my first full-time job in food service. I'm very happy to be here.
And I'm very thankful for her, because she's very computer literate. You can imagine with the amount of people work that we used to do, she was a blessing. My main background has been in healthcare, in food service, for like nursing homes, healthcare divisions, hospitals, I also have a restaurant. So I've been in the restaurant business for the last 30 years. And definitely a different switch coming to the school system. I think with both of us together, we're putting my older generation with, I think, the new restaurant scene with the nutritional background from Olivia. I think it's a great mix to be putting together right now. And we're having huge success.
Because definitely down the road, the idea we have is that Olivia can do some nutritional teachings or opportunities during lunch to help kids bring, you know, bring.
Expand their palate.
Healthy or eating habits into their world, yes, expand their palates as well.
I just want to say I have a very happy eighth grader who buys lunch every day. And you all know, most of you know, that's saying something, because he's not a giant eater. So big fan in our household.
And just like an example of the, the computer tech, they have the QR code on one of the, on various poles in the lunchroom at the high school. So if you don't know what the week's menu is, you just hold up your phone, you can see the week's menu. I don't know if it's the month's menu or the week's menu. Month's menu. So I just think there, the ease of knowing what's for lunch is, there's many opportunities to have that. Plus, I don't know what it's like so much at the Quash and Coombe School in terms of variety, but I've never seen so many offerings available to kids at the high school. And I was there yesterday and they have these beautiful salads, chicken Caesar salads. And so I was walking around talking to kids and they're like, well, where do they buy these? And I said, they don't buy these, they make these. I said, there is a lady back there who pretty much just does salads and she's gone from where they started at 30, they're up to 70 that she's making. And they're beautiful, the kids love them, among many other choices. And yesterday was the Asian chicken, which everyone loved.
I should say, my eighth grader is not eating salads.
There are a lot of people eating.
Yes, yes.
Well, I definitely think coming out of COVID, that there were not options available. I think that's where we needed to start our track running in the high school. Obviously, the major population of middle school and high school. So that is our main focus for right now. I think those are the kids who definitely speak up the most. I think that definitely a nutrition portion that we're trying to bring in is all the gluten-free allergies, the plant-based foods that kids are eating. It's way more than it was just last year, the year before, the year before that. It's an endless supply of options that we need to have to accommodate everybody now. We were very fortunate to have a couple of students reach out to us at the end of school year last year, which we basically just came on board. I was in March and you were in, I was in May and you were in June. Seems like 20 years ago. So we were very fortunate for that, for them to have their own little group that we knew nothing about. And they reached out to us to say, here's where some problems are at. This is where we would love to be, here's some ideas we'd be more than happy to even share. So we kind of just took our running immediately, which was good for us. We love that view. And we're definitely seeing it now, especially with our, I guess, satisfaction definitely, because we do that daily, which definitely behind the scenes makes us feel real good. But the participation level of the student body has just increased. We've only been in school two and a half weeks dramatically. So that shows this is, it's not necessarily going in the right direction.
Okay, you know, you'll learn that I'm the data person, I'm the, you're one of them anyway. So what, what does that look like, like when you say?
So kind of tough for us, because like I said, we don't have a lot of, you know, background. But from last year's numbers, for instance, at the high school, we were feeding approximately 200 to 218 kids was our daily count. We have a student body of approximately 600 in that school. And as of today, we're already at 419. So that is, that is some very large numbers.
That's great.
I think we're always going to have a few kids that bring their own. But now we're definitely, they're definitely seeing that we're out to please them, out to try and accomplish what we need to do and have me through up a day. Because lunch is actually kind of now going back to, I don't know, like you said, brah or whatnot. We all get that. It's actually kind of cool that Snapchat is going around as little group texts about school lunch and pictures of it. So definitely we're going to.
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned some of the challenges with people with allergies, et cetera. How's that handled within the food program at the national and state level? Is there any certain requirements, certain things you can and can't do? How do they accommodate that or is that basically kind of flat out on the side?
So I'm not sure at, at that higher up level, we do have a list from our mentors, who are some of the nutrition and food service providers. And they give us what they call the A-list of products that are available. Then there's subcategories that are gluten-free availability and whatnot. And we're going back to a lot of basics now of cooking from scratch, which is something that, you know, obviously all restaurants do and we do at home. But the school setting is kind of gone by the wayside a little bit in the last few years. So we have to categorize those categories. You know, someone who's gluten-free in this day and age should be able to have every option that everywhere else can have, whether it's mac and cheese, if it's a roll for a burger or a hot dog or whatnot. So they give us those guidelines, there's products out there, we might have to, you know, research. I mean, find them, but we're getting them. And I think the same thing with plant-based products and things like that, possible burgers. They're all out there.
I wouldn't be surprised if the nutritional guidelines don't change at some point to adopt some of those. That's good. Glad to hear that you're recreating and getting back to basics. So thank you.
So good job, thank you.
For me, I'm just, I'm kind of excited about like the idea of like the future of like teaching the nutrition too, so that like the students understand, like, you know, selecting this and like, you know, what the benefits or the, you know, lack of benefits are if they, you know, choose something high in turd or like high in pad or like, you know, what their diet is and maybe better understanding. Like, I know they get some of that in health class, but like, you know, it's a really dive into like, what should I be eating based on what I'm doing? Yeah, that'd be kind of cool to see that coming through. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for everything you're already doing like everyone else is supposed to too, yeah.
I'm excited to hear this. I know my eighth grader also has been enjoying the offerings, so she also is slightly picky, so it's good. But yeah. But I also, like, part of me is hearing, you know, from scratch cooking, like, that's very exciting. And I'm like, are you going to maybe collaborate with the cooking classes and maybe, you know, like, I'm seeing opportunities here, I guess.
For that gentleman, and I'm sorry.
Chef Toly.
It is very new to the school system. I'm sure also, so we, we basically have not got that collaboration point yet. We are in talks already, so I think that those are definitely, you know, futures to come. And in my personal chef myself, the last 35 years, I would love to do that. And we have already met and talked and it's just turning the corner and maybe it's the next game or the next page of the book.
Yeah, again, I'm just seeing, I can see the road. And I'm happy to hear the backgrounds of both of you. And I, I think this is a great opportunity for Mashpee, so thank you and welcome.
Just to share a weird little trivia piece about Olivia. So her mom probably, well, it was when I first came here, used to be a teacher in the district. She taught at the Coombe School, might have been kindergarten, Christine Core was her name at the time. So it's just a weird, like, layers of connection-ness. We didn't know that, but then we discovered that, so, yeah.
Well, I'm just, I, there's just so much positive stuff going on right now at Mashpee Public Schools. And this is probably like a secret in terms of the public. I don't think they kind of know about, I mean, I'm sure they all know how important food is to their kids, but I don't think they realize what kind of innovations are kind of happening in our school cafeterias. And I'm just grateful for your enthusiasm and your energy. And I sampled some of that food at convocation and it was very good. That's what it's like in school lunch then.
Going to sea shrimp.
But, you know, it kind of just proves that like maybe not the same food, but they're the same people behind the scenes.
Yeah.
And I think I couldn't be more happy with the staff that we have there right now, who are already on board with how we've had to transform into what we're doing now. People who have been there for so many years doing so many things in a certain way. And now new leadership, brand new leadership. It's, you know, it's tough to do that. And we've had no complications at all. It's been smooth sailing, like motorboat style. So I think hats off to Olivia, but hats off to the, to those people who work in our schools already. We've had very success just because of that, that's for sure.
Great. Well, when you get the machine humming, you know, if you need some volunteers during lunch hour so we can kind of see what this new normal looks like, I would be, I would sign up for that.
Feel free to stop by anytime for the dishroom area around one.
You're welcome to push a trash can around any time.
If I were visible, my eighth grader would, you know, shoot herself. So I have to be sort of hidden. But, but yeah, it was, it's just great to have you here. And I know that if you own a restaurant for 30 plus years, then you're never going to run out of energy, because that might be one of the hardest jobs you could possibly take on. If you need anything, let us know, Kevin, okay? We're so happy that you're both here. Thanks, Olivia, as well.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Thank you.
Okay, so where are we? Oh, Christine Masterjack is next.
Yes, so we have our Director of our Discovery Camp to share a little bit about this past summer's experience. And she has her nice little helper here with her. You may do whatever you like.
As a class teacher, I can talk in front of little slides.
Okay. You do your thing.
Nice to see you all again, the orange shirt. So we just came to share about how Falcon Discovery Camp went this summer. As you remember, we were here about a year ago. Last summer it was Genius Academy. And then before that, I wasn't involved, but it was Camp Falcon. And so the feedback from families at the end of last summer was they loved Genius Academy, but they also loved Camp Falcon, and we just called them both. And so that's what Patty and I talked about, was trying to immerse them. So the approach this summer was a first session in the morning where students were organized into grade level clusters. So students entering grades one through two were together, students entering three, four, et cetera. And they worked on passion projects. So basically a more condensed version of Genius. So basically a more condensed version of Genius Academy. Student-driven, student-centered, they can choose what they want to learn about. And then we switched session two was more similar to Camp Falcon a few years ago, where students had different clubs. So each week students had a different club. While those were mixed grade levels, we did try to keep students of similar grades together depending on the activity. So in Field Day, for example, we had Washington centering eighth grade with the students first graders. So the grade level difference was four blocks. I brought just some pictures to show you from camp so you can get a first-hand view. Sure, do I have control? Do you just...
I think Patty may know your assistant, but I do not.
Oh. Oh, I'm so sorry. I just didn't think to, Kaden, Masterjackmow, he was a camp president. I don't know what I thought.
No, they're not related at all. That's just their name.
What grade are you in, Kaden?
Fourth.
Oh, so camp included bussing and snacks again this year, which may seem like a small thing, but it was really a giant, giant thing for families. They expressed frequently that when it happened for them, it wasn't for the transportation provided, students all the time were thankful for snacks and, you know, came to camp already ready to eat. So wonderful that that was included. It was really a small thing. These are some pictures from Lego club. There were two different teachers who ran Lego club depending on the week and they did a wonderful job with it. It wasn't only open play while there was open play time. They also structured different challenges and activities using Legos. So it was interesting to see how innovative this group could be to just some of the many things that they created. And then we also had art club and the art club teacher used the art room here, but we did have our own current supplies. And she ran her club in a similar way where there was some open art time where kids were able to choose their own path and then also some prompted time where they were given direction. Field Day Club, so Field Day Club in the last minute had to get switched out to outdoors because the gym was being renovated. And the teacher of Field Day Club, Mrs. Montague, came up with such creative ideas that I would never have thought of. So they played this one game, for example, with sponges. Did she ever put sponges under this? That's good for those. But she, the kids had a blast playing the sponge toss game that she came up with. It was really fun. And we had Chinese Games Club, so we were fortunate enough to have the Mandarin teacher as one of the teachers for clubs. So she ran two for clubs. One was Chinese Games, then the other one was Chinese Cultural Crafts. And this is actually a video of one of our camp students showing off what he had. Great.
[inaudible]
You can hear the kids in the background quite impressed.
Great. And then Chinese Cultural Crafts Club, they made dragon show puppets as well as panda show puppets, popsicle decorations, and she had them all get up and present their projects in front of their peers, which I thought that they would be hesitant about, but it was a really calm group, but they were also excited about what they made. They were actually quite outgoing about it. And then we had yoga club right here, which is a familiar scene. And some of the students from the E S Y program, which shared Washington for the summertime, came down with their special education character that participated as well. Wonderful collaboration. So we have a combination of ages from the high school who's required E S Y and some first and second graders, all of which is giving us some value right here.
What does E S Y stand for?
Second school.
Oh, okay. All right, that's right.
Next up, we have Tasty Reads Club. It smits all of creative innovation. She combines reading aloud a story and then creating a snack inspired by the story. So it's very hands-on because we enjoy it as well as being able to hear her read stories best. They made ice cream in a bag as well as vegan ice cream in a bag. We had a couple of vegans who were part of camp and some fruit pizzas, watermelon cupcakes. And then we are at the Passion Project. So this was session one, so this was in the morning. So the students decided on their own what they were interested in researching about and learning about. We have everything here from wanting to learn about fairies and then he created this as well as one that was made out of Legos, that was really impressive, to, this is supposed to be a forensics lab. She's really interested in forensics, so she turned a cardboard box into her own version of a forensic lab. That's here. And speaking of Kaden, this is his Passion Project. Can you tell us something about our experience at camp?
So I went, um, when we went to the beach and did a Santa Claus contest and the project I did was with Skipper, you have your program, I thought, and the Passion Project was what Spiderman and I did a bit, we were doing, and I was working fast about it. And with field trips, I went to the beach, using the friends and the beach, gathered quite nicely.
Cool.
That's cool.
I have a question for Kaden. I thought Spiderman's name was Peter Parker. Who's Miles Morales?
Oh, I guess it was.
There are more than one Spiderman?
There's a whole bunch of theirs.
Oh, okay. I'm behind the times. I will have to learn about the other Spiderman.
And then the last week of camp, we do have either of those sessions, we went on field trips each day. And so this is one group, we stuck with grade level bands for the first couple of field trips. So this first group went to the Cape Cod Museum of Natural History and the aquarium opened up just like we do the week before we went. So that was wonderful timing for us because we had so much fun. I think that I probably got about 50 pictures of this guy right here, a man favorite. Love those. No.
Really?
Yeah. And we have the slightly older group and they went to the Heritage Museum of Gardens. So that's one that you got to right here. What was the best part of that trip?
Well, it was pretty neat. So we got to like do like building traps and put it all full down.
And then our oldest group went down to Salma and at the Woods Hole Ocean Discovery Center, we heard a presentation at first from them and we were able to learn all about the different types of scientists down at Woods Hole and their different goals and how that can evolve over history. I found it fascinating. And then they saw the shark cam and they got to get inside, you know, it was really hands-on. They had a good time. And even just being out down outside, having a snack down there, there were so many kids who told me that they've been down there before and what they're doing. And then lastly, the entire camp, so all 94 students, club staff, we all went down to the beach, South Beach Beach. And yes, that's the winning one. We had a sand castle creation contest. So students were in mixed age level teams and their goal was to create a sand creation and have everything from the Mashpee M down to the winning one, which just left, who won because they had a whole marvelous tale of how their castle had been created and the English teacher made it. So they had a ton of fun. And there were a lot of kids too who expressly had never been to the beach before, so that was nice to see because I'm getting to see it.
There's that actually Mashpee culture.
And the fans at the end of camp, I just included this, it really melted my heart. It was the last day at parent pickup and it was horrid. I was just completely drenched and a kid ran back out of his car and his sister as well, bringing these flowers and taking a picture and mom just said they had such a good time at camp, but it was just, you know, such a nice way to end the camp that I took a picture of it. And just some feedback from families about what they appreciated and they had such a time, but I thought it was good. Any questions about Discovery Camp?
Can I add? It was funded in its entirety through the ESIR grants, which are the federal funding that we received for COVID. And so I just wanted to make sure that part was clear to the world at large, that that was what some of our funding went towards.
So it was free to all the participants?
Every part of it.
Awesome. Bussing, snacks, travel, everything. And are we planning to offer it next year?
I think down the road, as some sources of funding may, you know, collapse a little bit, we need to look into our budget for funding.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to shout out to Christine, she's just a phenomenal coordinator of this camp. She starts back, you know, well before the school year's out, you know, getting all of the teachers lined up and the ideas and then getting something communicated to families and then once the camp starts, she runs it every day. So I'm extremely grateful to have her in place. She does a phenomenal job.
She is phenomenal.
Yes.
We have a Christine Masterjackmow fan club in my house.
Oh, mine too.
Yeah. You leave a mark on everyone you work with.
And now, Kaden, you're in that club too. We're fans of you.
And thank you for coming too.
Yeah, thank you both.
Thank you.
Night. Okay. I'm certain we're going to make up some time.
We are going to make up some time.
Obviously, next to I am. So report to the superintendent.
So in terms of start of school year 22, 23, different people have shared pieces. We last met as a committee on August 17th, but highlighting some of what we go through to get ready for the day, we, I mean, the start of school. We had the three days of new employee orientation in August. We had a full day of substitute training on the 18th of August. Quasian School does their scavenger hunts for rising third graders. Delia talked about Jump Start for rising seventh graders. On the 26th of August, we do an annual meeting with bus drivers and monitors. That is not something that happens in every district, but we really like making sure we message correctly and that these people greatly matter to us. They're the first face of Mashpee. We had a, first time we've done this, a back-to-school cookout for staff and they could bring their families. That was on the 26th. The 29th, many of you were able to join us at convocation. Then we had some professional development by Dr. Khaleesi Warneum, who's working with the district for the next three years. And then we already talked about the safety and emergency drills from the Mashpee Police Department. 8:31 was the start of school for grades K, I mean, grades one and one through 12. Also on that day was when the pre-K and kindergarten families are welcomed in for an orientation because their students started the following day, which was the first. We had vote, a primary election voting at Quasian on the day after the Labor Day closure does present some challenges. There were only two wandering voters that weren't where they were supposed to be, but generally it was all good. Delia talked about the all-sports night. All schools within the first, you know, four days tend to have their first fire drill. Those were successful everywhere. Dr. Hanscom and Consuelo Carroll and I did a visit to Southport on the 14th as sort of our pre-work to their upcoming bus tour and also just, and they had a lot of, they had some other guests there that were not normally the Falcon, Southports, Southport Falcons, but we had a lot of good feedback from those individuals. Quasian is the only school that's had its open house so far, which was last week. Tomorrow night is the MMHS open house from 6:00 to 7:30. On the 28th of September, we are doing a planning meeting at the high school with Dr. Manette and Lindsay Cat and Hope and myself with the Mashpee Men's Club. They are great supporters of our schools. Coombs Open House is next Thursday and then finally on the 30th of September, which is next Friday, is the annual Southport Falcons Bus Tour. And it's funny, when we went to see them and we were talking about hashtag we are Mashpee, they don't really know what that was, so we've added that to the bus tour because they should go there and know what a great and wonderful experience it is. So that, that's just sort of things that we do to get in place. Our teachers did a phenomenal job of welcoming students. I was able to bring our town manager through on the, I don't know if that was the 29th, 30th, I think, actually, 30th. Our buildings were extremely hot. He had an opportunity to have one-on-one conversations with individual teachers as well as groups of teachers and he learned firsthand how pleasant the buildings can be in the warm weather. So we have an ally in terms of that piece. Also in your packet, you have enrollment. We put a new page in only because we were missing some data that I wanted to make sure you had. All right. So you can see that, and these are unofficial enrollment numbers because we have to certify by October 1st, but it shows we have 1,473 students in all of our schools. You can see what's in each grade level. You can also see the choice students at each grade level. We have 141. You can see a little comparative data from school year 21, 22 down below. We've also included information about students currently enrolled this year at Cape Tech and last year's numbers at Cape Tech and also Sturgis this year and Sturgis last year. And then there's a little chart showing you school choice. The, the outnumbers is not something we have right now, but you can see the increase in the incoming school choice. You have information on special education down in the middle there. So I don't know if you have any questions on anything on this chart? Next, and if you have a question, you can throw it out at me. Next is sort of a lengthy staffing changes. It's similar to what you saw in August, but it's pretty much done at this point. We, the only thing we're still looking for is an athletic trainer and we are not alone on the Cape in that need or in our league as well. It's just there, they are, there are so few of them. And so we have had to call upon EMTs to be present, particularly for home games, but we continue to search and we're very hopeful. But we're also very grateful. We were able to fill all of our positions and I think every one of them is, you know, a wonderful addition to the district. So you have Matt Trivari's sports listing there and of note is that JB, field hockey coach, I hear she's great.
She was great today.
But you do see participation now. I didn't double check if he had the right enrollment at the high school, but he has it at about 40% of students are involved with, you know, an athletic event, which granted in the fall, we have more offerings than we do in the winter, but that's great to see. So you have the data there if you have any questions. And then you also have Consuelo's report in your packet and...
One quick question on her social media thing is, it's empty because I'm assuming this is the start of 20, of this year, the 23?
This chart?
Okay. Yeah, the chart.
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't see the date for that, so I just wanted to make sure for clarity.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
And I, as a parent who attended that all-sports night, and I think I communicated it to you, but just for those of you who weren't there, our athletic director did an amazing job. And Delia, you heard it in Delia's presentation as well, but it was just, it was firm about explaining the rules, but it was also, I really appreciated the emphasis on, he said at one point, notice that this says student athlete, not athlete student. You know, your job here is to be a student first and a good person, you know, and your behavior is just as important as your performance. And so it was just, I was really impressed. I don't know, it just set a very nice tone, I thought, for what the values of our district are, so it's great.
Yeah, I think Matt is a very whole, individual focused. I mean, he loves his sports and his coaching, but there's just a different feel for emphasis on being a kind and, you know, human being that we want to eventually lead us, so creating those people. I wasn't going to have the administrator share out, but they are all here and if you had specific questions on anything that you know is going on in their schools or you're wondering about, they are here to answer or respond to questions. Do you have a question?
I love hearing from you guys, but in... I love hearing from you guys, but in the interest of time, I'm gonna take the superintendent up on her offer. Is that okay? Great.
And then, the only other thing under acknowledgements that I'd like to share is yesterday was National IT Professionals Day. And I just want to give a shout out to the phenomenal team that we have in Mashpee. So Suzie Brooks is our Director of Instructional Technology. Sean Maroney is our Director of Technology, mostly handling all that hardware stuff. Holly Wilcox-Klein basically handles all of the computer needs of the staff in this building. Christine Fisher works at the high school, but she is sort of our behind the scenes power school, Desi Data person. And then, Jack Green is the person at Coombs that supports those teachers in their day-to-day needs. So we really have an outstanding team as well. And my last comment is to say, who's ever listening out there in TV land, we need a late bus driver for Mashpee Middle High School. We can get you training. You can, it's gonna be in my Friday communication to reach out to Ashley. But in terms of an equity piece, I don't want kids not being able to participate in after-school activities because they don't have a ride home. Part of the glitch is that our drivers are tied up with the elementary run. We have the bus. And if you want to drive a bus, we can get you trained, but we really just need a late bus for the middle high school. So that's my plea. That is the end of my section.
Be great.
Thank you.
Ashley?
Okay. In your packet to start is, was requested of me for food service reports. You have FY '21, '22, and '23. Unfortunately, I would, you can look at them individually. I would not compare them. They're very different years. FY '21, for instance, we only had half the students in for a portion of the time. So if you look high level, you'll see that food cost was only $150,000 for the year. That's abnormal for us. FY '22 is a little bit of a better picture, but still, it was a COVID year with COVID funding. And I included FY '23 just so you could see where we're going, but we've had no reimbursements this school year and things are just starting. And as you heard, we're really having a new program this year, new offerings, new people in leadership. One of the other things we're doing for the food service team is having a mentor. It's a retired food service director from an outside district. They're gonna be able to provide monthly check-ins just to make sure they're meeting all the requirements of the state and federal regulations. Any questions for food service? For FY '23, they're my standard reports. I've not included to date the grants. We're still in the process of getting approval for our FY '23 grants. Once I have those, I'll include that in the next packet.
So, you might pick up first. I sensed you were about to speak. Well, mine was about the revolving accounts, so it looks like you're on lunch.
I'm on food service and so, just for our association, the food service director is included in the school budget, not in the school, or not in the lunch program budget. Is that also true for now the assistant?
They both are currently in our general fund budget.
Okay. Is that budgeted?
It's unbudgeted as of right now. We could always assess whether revolving account is quarterly and see where it wants to go.
My question was about these, this athletic gate receipts.
Yes.
How are we spending this down? Feel like we had a.
There is no threshold. There's no cap on it. We had this conversation, I think, once this school year. So right now, Matt is in the process with the turf project. There's going to be some additional purchases that need to be made. Because it's turf now and you can't use things that you could like stake into the grass, for instance, like flags for soccer. Those might be additional purchases that were unbudgeted in the school budget. That can go out of the athletic revolving account. We also have, there's a handful of things. It's kind of above and beyond what the school budget and the yearly expenditures are. We're looking for some seating and the stadium field on the bleachers that are not just those uncomfortable bleacher seats. They're a little bit more with seat backs, so we're looking into that. We're also looking into team benches and seating for the grass fields as well. So he is thinking about it. COVID, we didn't have to dip into the revolving account. We also didn't have as many gate receipts as we've had in prior years.
Right. That's a positive change.
Yeah.
Okay. And the, the EMTs that were coming out of our operating.
Currently, yes.
Okay.
That'd be nice. At your setting was an additional document, which was the FY '24 Budget Process and Timeline. Included in this was the memo from the town manager to all department heads on his expectations of the budget process and the timeline. Our budget, the superintendent's budget is due to the town on September 30th, and we're in the process of completing that. We did meet with the finance working group this week to get feedback on what we had prepared. And we're taking their feedback and layering that onto the budget presentation. Any questions for '24? Some good news. The turf field. We had a meeting today with the town as well as our project manager, Gail Associates. The turf is installed. It is done. Green Acres and Sprint Turf was onsite today to do the last minute maintenance and teach the DPW staff how to use the equipment. They are going to be painting. There are hash marks on the football field that will be painted this weekend. The GMAX and HIK test testing is being done tomorrow. That's to make sure that the field is safe enough. Those results will go to Gail. They'll do the analysis and provide the DPW the information. So.
Sounds like the shock pad.
Yes, all of that. The track surfacing, because of the weather this week with the rain, has been delayed. They won't be starting until Sunday or Monday. Also depending if the rain is gonna hold out for us next week. Once they start, it should take about two weeks to do all the laying of the track and all the striping of the track. The storage building, the Miller House is what we're calling it, is due to be onsite on September 29th, which is next week. So that will be completed, which is great news. So we're not waiting for that any longer. And we have mats that cover the track for the athletes to get from the outside of the facility onto the turf so they don't ruin the track. Those will be in October 7th. So there's really not gonna be much play before that date because they can't, unless they're taking their shoes off and putting them back on over the track. We don't want to ruin the new track.
Sounds like my grandmother's house.
Yeah. Well, they will be when they're doing the track, so we'll see that next week. But we're nearing the end and it's been a great process. Gail Associates, along with, I just want to get their, Green Acres, have been great to work with. And I'm really grateful for the teamwork of everyone in the DPW with us. So I know that Rob and his team was really excited to go out there today, see how to use the equipment. They talked about the infill a lot. It's not the crumb rubber. So listening to the differences between that was really refreshing and nice to hear. So it's been, it's been great. I'm looking forward to playing on it. The girls are ready for it, so.
Does the track have to sit or is there a couple of weeks or what is it?
So it's only gonna take them two weeks to do the whole process.
Oh, and then it's done?
And it's done.
Good.
So when's the first of that? It's scheduled?
So hopefully, if things go well, we'll be able to start using the field the week of October 11th. There are various sports games that week. We, like, there's, I think there's a boys soccer game, there's a girls soccer game. And then, the football game is scheduled for October 14th at the stadium, which is also the homecoming weekend.
Yes, so we had originally, well, we were just throwing around some dates with the town manager to do a sort of a ribbon cutting. And we talked about doing it on October 17th, which was before town meeting. But it's, that's probably not gonna be a good choice, but I, but on the 11th, potentially ceremonially, anyway. There is a, what is it? What's meeting in the high school that night? It's a sewer, what?
It's the sewer planning meeting.
There's a meeting, there's a town meeting using the auditorium that night at like 6:30. So I'm thinking maybe the 11th would be an option for doing the ribbon cutting. Because then, the first team, which may not be football, but could be using it like the 13th or 14th or 12th. We looked at the schedule. There are some home games. And then, the first home football game is the 15th?
14th.
14th. And then, homecoming is that weekend too. So it kind of would be nice to have it ready to go.
So we'll have firmer information next week. It really is dependent on the track being able to start on Sunday. If we get delayed with that, it delays being able to get on the field, so.
So Patty will keep us updated.
I will let you know.
Ribbon cutting.
Yes.
And.
Because town manager says he has some big scissors.
He's got those big scissors. I think, I love the idea of being open for, you know, that, that big homecoming game that week. You know, it's like we can be playing on it that week and then.
I like the idea of it opening with the ribbon cutting, not necessarily for football, but for.
Right, right, right.
That's what we were talking about.
Wonderful other games.
I love how they, because the holiday is Monday.
Monday.
And so I love the idea of, you know, so we'll keep our fingers crossed. But just of kind of having a ribbon cutting for like the week, you know, like.
And it would, it'd be great to have a ribbon cutting on a night when there isn't anything, I mean, other than practices, so that all the athletes could be part of that. Would be nice. It's my vision.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing about all that. Up for the record, when you said there was good news, I thought you were gonna say we came in under budget.
Oh, yes. Well, so far.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Buried the lead.
Sure. I mean, there's still things to do, so don't hold me to that. But, you know, at the end, we'll figure it out.
Great. Thanks, Ashley. All right. Next, we have Student Advisory Committee.
So I was remiss in asking to maybe move this only because I did not have a chance to meet with Dr. Manette yet to discuss that. I need to email her this week, tomorrow, when I get phone.
Hi. You had a great conversation with, recreating the student council.
Excellent, so. Okay.
He's doing some work and I pushed him on to this week where there's a big student council coordination and he's gonna touch them.
Yeah. And I know MASK just had a training for the student advisory committees that we weren't, you know, we're not at that point yet. But I, I did ask if they're gonna be having more in the future, so I haven't heard back from them yet either. So I'm going to follow up there as well. So it's still, I think we're still in the planning stages of this and I, it's just, I'm a little busy from work. Apologize for dropping the ball on that this past month, but.
Thanks for trying to tackle it.
It is, I, I will be emailing you. Yes, so it all worked out. It all worked out. So this will probably be back next month.
I love it when a plan comes to you. All right. New business, the HVAC project with DPW? Would like to update folks on that.
Well, I, what I will say, and then I might turn it over to Ashley, is so we had a meeting in August?
Yes.
With officials from the town. And it, it's a bigger municipal project that they are planning to undertake. And so, it does involve our three school buildings, the police station, as well as town hall. And it really is a focus on improving the safety and wellness for everyone who either works or learns in our buildings. And including the police department and the town hall. And so, it's sort of a combined effort to sort of correct and make it a better environment. There's multiple sort of ideas about how to go about this. And from my, from our perspective, we do have funding that we could put towards one of our buildings. It would probably be the Coombs School to get that one underway. It's, we can never do all three buildings the same year anyway because there are some logistics involved as well. But we do, we are sort of unified between the school and the town with an agreement that there is a need for this project to get done. And we're gonna move forward to, to do it in the best possible way. I don't know if you could add a little bit more on the monetary, financial side?
Sure. So the all-in project right now is roughly $31 million. Again, that includes all three school buildings and two town buildings. Our portion of that would be about $25 million. As Patty mentioned, we do have funding sources outside of taxpayer funds of our ESIR 2 and 3, as well as school choice money. If the committee would like to use that allocation. So right now, we've been talking about the Coombs School and starting with that project. There is an engineering study that has to be done before we move forward. And that will give us all the documentation we need to move forward with the project. Right now, that's projected to be about $800,000. We don't have the final quote yet. But we've been in talks to go to CIP to get that ball rolling and pay for that using our grant funding. So when we wrote the SR2 grant and the SR3 grant, we put money aside to do the HVAC work. And I reached out to the state and they said that we can use it on engineering. That was my only question, if it had to be the actual work or if it can be the lead-up to it. And they did confirm that engineering was okay. Once we move on from that, there's still approximately 3.9 million that would need to be funded. We have about 1.2 in our SR3 funding. And then, we do have money in school choice. That wouldn't cover the entire cost of Coombs as of right now. And that's being conservative with our school choice funding. Making sure we do still have the money set aside for the operating budget, as well as having that $250,000 floor. Those things can also be reevaluated, assessed by the school committee when we get there. If you want to deplete the funds, you could do that if you saw fit. So there are a lot of options on the table right now. One of the things we also talked about in that meeting was going out for a bond authorization. So what that means is that it would be outside of Proposition 2 and 1/2. And that would need to be authorized by the town's people at a 2/3rds majority. And it would go to a ballot that would need a simple majority. Right now, they ran some numbers at the 30 million mark. And so, what happens is they go to town meeting, we get authorization to have the bond. And so, as the projects kind of roll out, we then go out and get that money. So it wouldn't be an impact at the taxpayer on day one. It would be throughout this process, depending on how much money they needed to use in that bond authorization. Again, let's say this is gonna be anywhere from a three to five-year project. There could be additional funding that comes out. So we've had SR2 and SR3. There could be additional federal money and infrastructure updates that we could, as a school system, go out for. Right now, we don't have that opportunity, but we're looking for it all the time. Any questions?
Yeah, I noticed, I shared with the committee that MAS D had sent out the summary from the Board of Education meeting yesterday, where they talked about the supplemental funds that the, that the state is making available specifically for HVAC. But they are going to particular low-income districts. We did have a conversation yesterday. I know, I think the, there are some tribal council members that are trying to get Mashpee designated as an environmental justice community, based on a lot of factors, environmental factors, but also the presence of the tribe, tribal nation here. And seeing that we are the district in the entire state with the highest portion of native students, I'm interested in seeing if we would qualify for any of that funding, considering we're like attacking a project. We have the support of our town, you know, that maybe there's something. I mean, I don't even care if it's $200,000. I don't care what it is. But it just pains me a little bit that the state's passing out money for HVAC and we have a project that's kind of poised to get going, so.
I got so excited yesterday. I was like.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, Mrs. DeBoer was like, yeah, I don't think we qualify.
Well, because there's a link.
A link and it tells you which districts are eligible.
And we're not on a list.
Getting my grant writing skill ready.
But there could be other ones that come up, but for that particular one, we don't qualify.
Yeah, it was like, it wasn't like districts had to apply. It said, this will go to Springfield, this will go to Boston.
And it's an amount. It's entitled.
Yeah. So anyway, it's, I think the take home from the initial conversation was that this is a priority for the town manager. And, and we, we also had the Selectman Cotton there at that meeting as well. And, you know, of course, the devil's in the details, but I think the next thing is really that CIP meeting.
Once the engineering.
We're waiting for the company to get a.
Once that's.
Yep. A firm quote. So the one thing with CIP is we're going. We don't want to go with a number too low, so we don't have to go back. So we want to make sure it's as accurate as we can be first time around.
And I think we've also been told that, you know, a lot of municipal buildings and schools are looking at these types of projects and, you know, supply and demand. There's only so many engineers to do the feasibility studies and then the companies that actually do the work. It'll probably be a challenge there.
So a question, the $800,000 is the engineer just for case of interest?
Correct.
And then, I guess the devil is in the detail in order to, it's a priority, but what does that mean as far as timing? what does that mean as far as timing? So, obviously, are we requesting a placeholder for September 30th? For the CIP deadline for September 30th?
Yes.
For Casey Coombs?
So, we had had this on our CIP for FY '23. It was a to-be-determined amount. We didn't know at all what this would cost, but we did put it on last year in the budget discussions. It's going to be on again for '24, probably as a three-year projection. And so, right now, Catherine and I are reviewing the global capital projects to prioritize what we're going for with '24, '25, and '26. Casey Coombs is on the list for '24.
And a $300,000, $31 million range bond offer, has the finance committee, has that been discussed with them?
I don't believe so. I think it was an initial meeting with those at town hall. Craig has been looked into it, so he's able to, he's starting to run those projections so we can have real numbers to talk about. I think once we hit that September 30th deadline and submit for FY '24, those more detailed conversations can happen.
Okay. Does it seem like this should not be a surprise to them?
No. And I don't believe it will. We've had this conversation when we were talking about the FY '23 budget. And the town manager is aware that it has been sitting on CIP. We've been doing the work with the DPW, such as we did, we did the studies in all three buildings that came back with those initial numbers of about $20 million. We knew that this HVAC was going to cost. Now tackling that and adding the engineering, we're up to $25 million. So that's where the change has been so far. But for the last year, we've been talking about this because we submitted SER 3, I think, what, was it last October, Hope?
Yes.
So this has been in conversations with them.
So is the plan for the school to move forward with Casey Coombs necessarily either with grant funding for some CIP or the school committee determines that they have adequate funding through various internal mechanisms?
So right now, the next step is to get CIP approval for FY '23 to do the engineering study so we can see how much the total cost for Coombs is going to be. So we can figure out what funding mechanisms we have to support it, what the schools can pay on our own, and then if we need to ask the taxpayers for any money at town meeting.
May town meeting.
May town meeting.
Yeah, so at the CIP meeting, the funding source is going to be one of the SER, right? Would you say two?
Two and three.
So we go through the process that they want us to go through, but the identified funding source will not, will be through us?
Yes.
Yeah, we have that for the feasibility, for that A.
For the engineering study.
Right, so it should not do the full approval.
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Thank you, Ashley. So if anyone has any questions on that specifically, you know, I think Ashley has demonstrated she's really the person to talk to. So, we'll direct you to her for that, and we'll keep you posted if we get any additional meetings that are scheduled. You have the district upcoming events. I think you've heard about a number of them tonight. Are there specific ones you want to call out, Patty?
I did add on the chart you're looking at, there's two little red asterisks. Those are showing events that if you attend, they're tied to that goal that you have in terms of relationship-building, community outreach. So, you know, middle school, open house, which I think I'm going to mostly man that table because it's unfair when really all of you have middle school and high school children. So you need to go to learn for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was definitely going to raise that because I...
I'm going to sort of be positioned there. Maybe I'll find a couple of students who can also pass out the brochures. Matt did a great job. I think what was great, and actually, Consuelo can do it too. We, at the Quash unit one, we hopped onto her table, and it made it better. So I think we'll do that.
It was a more organic process, because we're talking about volunteering and then also like...
Yeah, and she was attracting people, and so there was an easy way to say, here's a brochure to learn more about the school committee and...
Patty's gave us her own table, no one would ever come talk to us. We need to be at Consuelo's too.
And they got a lot of people, too. It was nice to see a lot of people stopped at that table.
Yep, yep. Just Monday's a half-day, Coombs Open House is next week, the Orange Shirt Day at All Schools Friday, Southport Falcons Bus Tour. You know, if you want to participate in that, you can. I know that Consuelo reached out to the Chamber of Commerce because we had had a meeting with their new executive director. And so inviting some of them as well to participate in that tour would be really, I think, a great idea. Oktoberfest is Saturday, the 1st. Consuelo will be having, or we will have a Mashpee Public Schools sort of booth. That's another opportunity for you to connect with residents. The special election's on the 4th here at Quash. We have a professional day on the 7th, and then Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 10th. And then, just a reminder, a town meeting is the 17th at the high school. That was my highlight of that chart.
The special election hours are slightly different than normal, right? Band at 5, I believe?
That would make sense, so I, yeah.
I think so.
It's just one choice you need to make there in terms of voting option. Two people running for one office.
Yeah, I would think that that Orange Shirt Day that was mentioned is also aligned with our goals.
Yeah.
And so, I think if you ever see anything on the calendar that you feel is, you know, compatible with what we've committed to this year, I encourage you to do that. Okay? Thanks, Patty.
Yep.
So you mentioned the town election, the town meeting. We earlier talked about the MASCE joint conference in November.
So I just want to, so registered as Nicole are Nicole, Matt, and Kathy. Sherry did not hear from Brian or Dawn, or maybe she did, but you didn't want to go, I'm not sure. And then obviously, Hope and I will be in attendance at that as well.
All right, so I think, is there anything that we didn't touch upon that's timely that we need to discuss? Excellent, okay. Any additional public comments? I didn't see anyone come in. Our usual standing-room-only crowd, so I will consider this meeting...
Minus a reporter, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.